This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call to order at 6:01 PM. Ultimately.
Oh my god.
The first couple items on the agenda are part-time holiday pay and part-time sick pay.
And it looks as though Scott has declined to be here, so we'll have to wait until he has a new select member. I remember I was not happy with Scott about that, especially because we agreed in principle and we drafted the language and all we had to do was come say yeah, but.
Yep.
So it's in the budget and Frank's on board as part of the Finance Committee. I can't imagine it will change his mind.
Yeah.
Should he be elected, so I'm assuming that as soon as we have a new select member, we'll vote it in.
Yep.
I really wanted to just get it done, but life goes on. Next up.
So item four is town administrator items including. Oh, I think you can have that whole page.
Okay.
The Monterey Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Right.
And this is with the RPC.
Yeah, this is their proposal. This is their proposal, so if you accept it, I'll have them write up a contract and it wouldn't start until July 1st. And he's saying about eight to 10 months to do it.
Remind me, this gives us the ability to apply for quite a variety of grants, am I correct?
Correct.
And the town's only responsible for, I think, three of the 15.
Four, I think.
For 12 of it, we got the three on the town meeting warrant.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
I'm sorry, the town's responsible for three, the grant's paying 12, that's what I meant.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Sorry, I had a long. Personally, I think we should do it.
Yeah.
I think it's a well-sent free grant, if it's going to notice quite a bit more than that, so.
So I would move to approve the scope of work for the Monterey Open Space Recreation Plan proposed by BRPC.
I'll second.
Any questions about that, Nikki?
Nope. How much is this? This is all part of the master plan?
No, this is different.
Oh, this is different.
So the open space recreation plan is similar to a master plan for our open space.
I thought it was combined with the master plan, that's why.
Yeah, it's not, it's kind of unrelated from the master plan. What happened was there was grants that Melissa discovered for funding for the playground, but one of the requirements for that grant was that we have an open space and recreation plan.
Could make sense.
And we didn't, we don't have one, at least not up to date.
Yeah.
And this grant, so the entire product's gonna be 15,000, but we have a grant for 12 that Melissa got. So the town's only responsible for 3,000.
That's good to have to know. I just thought it was part of the master plan, I see, but it's like everything.
And in addition to the money for the playground, the same sorts of sources might give us options for a lot of things.
Yeah, other things, yes. Oh, yeah. No, I can see that, it would be more than just that, but that's good enough, maybe.
Works for me.
So there's a motion to approve the scope of work. I would vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
And that is approved, two to zero. The next item is the Hupai Road 319 grant, and basically the completion date is becoming closer.
And wow, that's a lot closer.
You guys signed the actual contract amendment last week, I think. This is just the contract with BRPC, which demends the monies paid to them and the date.
It's a lot, it's a whole year sooner.
Yeah, DEP didn't want to go out that far, because I don't think they knew if there was gonna be funds or not.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the contract amendment with the RPC related to the 319 grant.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All vote yes.
Yes.
And two yeses, and that is approved. We are flying through to unanticipated business and comments and questions from the public.
I have nothing to say.
Pardon? I said I have nothing to say. I have a couple things I wanted to throw out there. One is, I'm thinking, just thinking ahead. Last year, one of the first things we did was kind of try to talk about priorities for the coming year. So I think it would be great, once we have the next select person on board, to have that conversation again, not yet.
Yeah.
And the second thing is just when the computing stuff came up, we got that email about that. Do we want to talk about that thing?
We can, yeah.
And one of the things it made me think about, especially with regard to that and like the Bylaw Review Committee, not being ready time for town meeting, it, and I'm just raising this conversation, I'm not, it's something I think we need to think about. But we've talked a lot about special town meetings really just being for unanticipated things. And I look at the size of the warrant, and I look at the size of the warrant in the last four years. It's not like they've been short ever. And I, I just feel like there are some issues that are big enough and serious enough that I don't think we'd want to set it in stone that we had a biannual meeting every year, but I, I feel like some of these things deserve enough attention and they're worthy enough that they seem like they weren't a meeting, maybe not of their own, but if we had two or three big things on a warrant instead of, you know, 18 or 32 or whatever, we could have that conversation. Things like the big bylaw overview review.
Yes.
And maybe something, maybe this year, maybe next year, something on the STRs or just something that, not just like little money things. So I just want to throw, I think I'm gonna write something for the June Monterey News, talking about that and just asking for people to give feedback on, like, is this something, I'm not trying to get less people involved, I'm trying to get more people. And if we, if we did it like, I don't know, six months, at this six-month date and said, if there, you don't have to have it, but if there are big issues that just won't fit on the warrant or we think warrant enough attention, plan for that to be on, I'm making it up for Saturday, remember, because it's six months.
Yeah.
Just so people could expect and look for that and just see what people say. Maybe everyone will be like, no, we don't want a certain meeting. I don't know.
I'm completely open to it. I like the idea, especially since we have the bylaw review coming up and, yeah, you take, I mean, normally the budget and related money special articles can be a meeting on their own. I've heard possibly, I think that there's at least one other town, if not many more, that kind of planned for a second meeting. That's usually, the money is in the spring, because we have to do bylaw rate money in the spring. And then kind of bylaws or zoning bylaws in the fall or winter. And I'm definitely open to it. And I agree, I think it would be good to have a discussion with the next board about any and all priorities in the coming weeks, months, for the full year, things that may go on more than a year, like the Culver project. And just get a sense of where we are all at and what the goals are. But yeah, I'm definitely, I mean, open to, and I like the regularity of something like a first Saturday in November. It kind of goes along with the idea that we have the first Saturday in May, and you can put that on your calendar front and advance and make sure to attend. So I'm definitely open to that, whether that's just planning it front and advance or actually changing the bylaws, I mean, we could.
I mean, like, you know, if we change the bylaw, we might have to do it, and there might be areas where we don't want to, we don't need to.
Yeah.
But if people knew that if there was going to be one, it was gonna be then, and they could like plan for it, it changes the attitude. Instead of being like, oh, here we go, a special town meeting, it'll be like, oh, well, I wonder if we're having a special town meeting this year.
Yeah.
You know, which, I don't, for me, it changes the, you have any thoughts about this, Nikki?
Yeah, and I like the idea. I mean, if you're having bylaw things, you can't have that at town, regular town meeting. That's just too much for people to think about, and then they can't concentrate on something like bylaws, where you really have to put some thought and you should process that. And I like having it before the real winter comes, so that you shouldn't have, no, you might, but you shouldn't have, you know. So having it in the middle of the winter kind of makes it chancy. So I like that first Saturday in November for, you know, if there are things coming up and if there are some money items even, you know, you can include them in that with bylaws or something like that. And get them, you know, taking, like you say, and having it at a set time, not like, oh, it's gonna be this way in November or October or something, and you just, yeah, that makes good sense to me. I like it.
Cool. That was it?
Yeah.
Oh, and, and do we want, I mean, I thought Melissa's suggestion about upping the computing and tech line to at least 10. Well, you know, minute 10 will be reducing the budget, which is nice.
Yeah.
Because the other lines, I think, like, what, 34 or 36, that's coming down.
Yeah. The health insurance is coming down, yeah.
Exactly. But I think it's a good idea to raise that, and I, it's alarming to think how much the cybersecurity stuff is likely costing, but it sounds like at least the group is thinking about creative ways to collaboratively bring that cost down as much as possible, because it's a lot for each small town to pay.
Yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, I'm in support. I know we already spent our computer budget this year of more security updates and, and our insurance is requiring some of it. So yeah, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in support of a higher budget. I don't have an exact number in mind. I need to see more details about where that money would go and who, or what, like, what exactly are we purchasing? Are we going to kind of stick with the IT service provider that we've been using? And just use that money to increase that time, or is it fiscal purchases or other consulting? Here's Melissa.
So I'll get you numbers on that. I was informed by Tom, who's our current guy, that he may be leaving us as of the end of the fiscal year. So I'm working with BRPC right now and Eggerma and two other towns, I can't remember them off the top of my head, to talk about a shared IT person and see what kind of rate we can get for that. We're hoping to have the meeting next week, so hopefully I'll have something before your meeting. As for the other prices, the endpoint software, I can't remember exactly what it does, that is very expensive, and that's what we're trying to get a better price collaboratively on. Let me just find this guy's email here. But he suggested, let's see. He tends to budget 1,000 for each computer, and what did I say, Susan? We had about 13 computers?
I think that was the count, 11 or 13.
And then for IT support, he suggested bumping it up to at least 5,000, if not 10. He said right now Eggerma is paying $25,000 a year for the guy that they use. Lanesboro is paying 7,000, and software is trickier, because he doesn't know what we have, but I can tell you that right now, most of the departments are each buying their own, like, we don't have a license for Microsoft 365 or whatever, so if somebody wants that, they're buying it on their own, they're buying their own antivirus software.
Would it, is it something we want to think about to, to get a site license for, I don't know what it runs, but instead of having each office buying, sometimes if you get a site license for, I don't, 10 machines, it's cheaper than getting 10 individual licenses.
Right. Yeah, I think once we can figure out, once with the, with the grant that we're currently doing, they're gonna assess all of our software and what we're currently using and the hardware, and they might be able to make recommendations as to how we could better be utilizing all that. So I'll have a better figure probably in the next month or so, not before town meeting, but I would just suggest at least 10,000 to bump it up, because we don't know what's gonna happen with Tom and getting a shared IT person.
What is that, that line is called what at this point? It's called computer, or is it called IT or computer IT? I just want to make sure that the accountant isn't gonna raise any flags if we try and, depending on what we spend it on.
Right now, it's called. IT expenses.
Yeah.
There it is. Line 155.
I mean, if we hire, we're probably going to hire, if, if we lose our current IT supporter, a person or maybe a firm. I mean, we're not going to get any pushback against paying wages out of that, or might we?
We're currently sort of.
If it's a consulting firm, I don't think we would, because it wouldn't be wages.
Yeah.
But I'll double check with Eric.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to keep, keep stuff up to date and secure, and, yeah, if you're, I guess you said the group is looking at individual people and also looking at firms for, for providing IT support to the towns?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah. I'm in favor of that. Is there, are there any other items? And I'm sorry, before I move on, to touch base on your first item, I am in favor of entertaining at least, maybe just setting a de facto date, let's say first Saturday in November, just as a, as a placeholder, maybe not that date, maybe that date. I'd even entertain adding in kind of a bylaw. I don't know what other towns do, but I believe that at, at least one other town in the Commonwealth has even kind of put that into a bylaw. I could be mistaken, but I think I've heard that before. I would see what they, what they have written up and how it is, and like you said, if there's no zoning bylaw changes or bylaw changes or money items at that time, you don't hold it, but if you're going, you're holding one to kind of try to keep it at that date.
And I only picked that because it was six months.
Yeah. No, but I like the regularity of the expectation. All right, if there's no other unanticipated business or questions from the public, we'll do that.
And I can go home. Okay, something else died.
I feel like doing the latest one first, but no.
Four and four.
Yeah, we should do four and four. They're both around, okay, one's kind of not ready.
So just so the condition, the members of the Sciworld and Finance Committee vote on each of the special.
Special, I think that must have been special articles. I wrote warrant articles and you wrote special articles. I don't care, either one is fine by me.
All right, we'll go with special. What if we do, and it's really only the money for the Sciworld and Finance Committee, so what if we say special money articles?
Okay, go for it.
In the next paragraph.
So this one was just, I was adding that in?
I was, actually.
Oh, you were? I can't tell. That's fine, either one is fine.
Basically, I was gonna replace the whole second half of the paragraph with Susan explaining that tritone, because I was confused, I hadn't reviewed that document, and I was confused about what, but you, in my, to my, in my recollection, explained what was going on.
That works for me. I really listened to it, but I like the way you capitalized, and it's much shorter. It works for me. So yeah, just delete the people most affected, because you just deleted the sentence, which works.
On paragraph, I'll go with Justin asked if there were any questions with the operating budget, and then. Justin. Wow, this is jumping.
It's both of us getting, we're probably headed the same way.
I think it would, I think what it needs to be is. What I think what it needs to be is that the Finance Committee required about the two lines litigation fees and town council retainer.
Yep.
Justin said that they would be combining the two lines and renaming it legal fees and expenses.
I like it. I can't, I can't figure out which ones to combine, but I'd write it in, because that works. I was trying to be good about putting big changes in the origin, but it's nice, because it, it does work better. If we had both done that, we could have just picked whichever one worked.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
The top of the next page.
Missed the.
Michelle listed items. She said she would like a better understanding of, call in the stabilization fund allocation.
That works.
Yeah, just delete appropriation. Fire company capital.
Improvements.
Improvements.
Yep.
And then, and then the rest.
I think that's mostly you, and they're all fine by me.
Yeah, finishing the basement, suggest.
The only thing in the, about two-thirds of the way down, Frank recommended checking with this town council, legal council. I don't think we want both in one. Yeah, so maybe just town council.
Town council and the accountant.
Right, but get out, not double, yeah. And it should read, and finishing the kitchen, not a finishing the kitchen?
Yeah, gotcha. And finishing the kitchen. Justin suggested. At the bottom of paragraph, Justin said the fire chief was requesting 129,000 for a new SUV medical vehicle, A9,000, and to be able to take the brush truck back off of the current vehicle and place it onto the, the way I have it, its current cabin chassis of Rescue 9. If that works for you.
Yes, getting rid of the old, just rescue. Yeah, I had old Med 9, but Rescue, Rescue Med 9 is fine. Chassis, right, okay. Right, right, so delete mine chassis link to you.
The Finance Committee and Sciworld weren't supportive of the 129,000 dollar.
Special article.
Special article.
And there, yeah. Yeah, I just put the style truck, because it's not actually.
I know, yeah.
I wasn't sure what the devil's star was. The third paragraph.
It's usually because I can't hear something.
Okay.
I think, yeah, Frank is not in favor of the cruiser at this time.
Works, okay. That's what I figured it was, but. So under colonial power, that paragraph?
Yeah.
Does that work for you? It looks like, you, you didn't say anything when you went to the next page, so.
Works for me.
Okay, cool.
And then the comment about the rural recovery center also works for me.
Okay.
The next conflicting thing I see is about the town meeting warrant. The Sciworld discussed a town on land surrounding the Curtis Road Bridge, surrounding Curtis Road Bridge construction.
Yep.
I think that works, if that works for you.
Yes, I think that was my wording, so.
Susan recommended having concrete maps at town meeting.
Okay.
I would move to approve April 4th, 23.
Second.
All right, vote yes.
Yes.
Approved.
Woo-hoo.
We'll put that, do, do, oh, child of sign.
Oh, yeah, but we both have the signs of this one.
It's just the open space proposal doesn't have a signature, but the Hupai Road, the.
Yep.
Just one.
Yep. Wait, is everyone just like two totally different colors? Do we want to like think about doing the two-week roll-around, so we can distribute our copies and then have it online?
I am open to that, if, if this.
I mean, it worked really well, the one we were able to do it. Like, I didn't want to even suggest effort this, because we're too far behind, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, well, we can get April 20th done very easily.
That, no problem. I, I think we can do this too. I just meant, we can get during tonight. I just meant if we wanted to like pick that up as our new thing.
Yeah.
You know, because it did, it was pretty smooth. You know, because it did, it was pretty smooth.
I'm open to it, for sure. Um, it's tough because week by week, some weeks are
Yeah, maybe, it may be that we don't some weeks because it just doesn't work or whatever, but I think that it, it, it was nice and saves a lot of paper and somehow this, there was less of this, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, because I saw, like, a lot of times there's
Yeah, right, because it, yeah, yeah, point taken. Because I had done it the week before you, so that
That's why there was, well, if you grab time stamps on that, or.
Well, exactly. Right, right, right. So we're not both trying to correct the same things. I totally agree.
Um, as far as this goes.
So that first one, rather than or so that this start, you have it, I don't care.
Rather than, okay, so which would make the money available immediately after the annual town meeting, rather than this start of the fiscal year till I won.
Start of the fiscal year. Yep.
And then delete the rest. And then and then we can delete that next sentence. Just for Justin reported that he heard back from town council regarding the thirty thousand dollar fire company capital funds and for this information, everyone, he reported that town council's main concern was that the improvement must affect your public purpose now and in the long term. The next sentence is fine. The next sentence is fine. Don Coburn asked if council was aware that
That I think that, that the town will take possession?
Yeah.
So if you just delete your that and the, and the transferred, it, it would read aware
That.
That the town will take possession, should the fire company disband?
Exactly. And then the next change is just council's.
Well, so that should be council apostrophe, uh, with an apostrophe? Because it's the opinion of the county?
Well, but it was multiple councils.
Oh, okay.
Yes, um.
I guess it's not an apostrophe then, you're.
Yeah. Um, as to the terms were still viable since the lease was transferred.
You can't just delete it.
Well, I, I did delete the stuff that's still here.
What, uh, no, I mean, do we need the month-to-month one? Okay, anyway.
Justin called town house and Donna Brewer. Um, then the rest, there's no conflict. It affects your purpose and that will get so in the long term.
Martha wanted you to know she just lost internet, so she's trying to come back.
Okay. Thank you. She agreed that this So on the comment, Justin also asked Donna if.
Where were we? Over this one?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Power has the power?
Or when? Justin also asked Donna, Donna, when or if if and when this Cyber and Finance Committee has the power to not expend money to improve it?
Yep.
I mean, that's a very complicated question.
It is. I mean, fundamentally, the meeting, as I understand it, meeting gives, um, our, approves our ability to make that decision and expend the money, but we're not required to do so. And in fact, I think that, you know, both us, both we and the Fin- the Finance Committee by suggestion, our, the point is to keep an eye on what's happening and make the best judgment we can in the moment, right? I mean.
I mean, it'd be kind of surprising if town meeting approved a hundred thousand dollars to buy a new truck. And we didn't, and we didn't do it.
Right.
If there's all the circumstances were reasonable now, if that truck didn't function or something, then obviously we wouldn't.
And certainly, when they do approve it, if we debt the truck for eighty-four thousand dollars, we don't pay the hundred thousand dollars anyway.
Yeah.
Right?
To the next one I see about the transfer station.
I was just, I was just looking at the, so some of these places on here were doing bold for the vote
Yeah.
and the motion, but some places were not. I think I don't know what the matter.
I think, I think we got them all. It was already.
Did we get them all? I don't know. I wasn't sure if that was out, because it's.
Well, the, the one I didn't do is, are the Finance Committee because
Right, because it's, right, right, okay, that's fine.
The Finance Committee, but I think other than that, they are.
Okay.
Um, the transfer station is the next one where there's a little bit of conflict, but Melissa noted the need to increase the transfer station budget by thirty thousand?
Sure.
Susan explained that the contract was an optional renewal and Casella turned down the renewal. Susan said that.
A new is fine.
A new contract is likely to cost the town an additional thirty thousand dollars compared to renewal prices with Casella. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then delete everything until Melissa said that the transfer station fee is increased to a hundred twenty-six, six, sixty-one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Including Melissa's request to initiate bids, which is fine. I think of course we're getting it.
Cyber and Finance, well, and also we don't have a bid. We're just as we're assuming, or not assuming, but making an estimation that it's gonna cost, right? We don't actually have a bid.
Wait, but we are asking for this.
Yes.
Right, we're waiting, that's all that that says. Right, Melissa's requesting additional bids.
But we don't even have one.
Oh, I guess just drop additional bids. You're requesting bids, we don't have one next to. But we're asking for multiple at this point, so. They're, they're not due quite yet, so. I think, did I hear that the Finance Committee is having a hearing on Thursday, I think?
Is it this Thursday?
I mean, it's no, a week from.
Away from, the Thursday right before now.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Are we meeting next week?
I'm open to not. We tried to last week, though.
I know, but that's okay. Like, we, we came in for two seconds because we had to appoint someone and then quit.
I'm open to not meeting.
Okay.
Unless something comes up.
Comes up that we have to, right?
Was, sorry, was that, you just mentioned something about the hearing, okay, on May second, which is how it is in here.
Right, that, on that day, they said May second. It turned, I, I don't think it actually is May second. I think it's May fourth.
Yeah.
But, but that's what they said that day. It just, they changed it, yeah. Yeah, okay, so you dealt with it. Just ignore my comment on, uh, Article six.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I just used the.
Right, thank you. Because I like, I hate it when we have article numbers because then we keep changing article numbers and you never know what it actually was.
And then with the mattresses, all I was pretty much doing was New Mollbro. And.
I don't know why seven, ten PM got in there.
Yeah, I just deleted it. And then the only, the only thing, so you deleted that sentence. I changed the spelling in that second paragraph, so my Mollbro should just delete it.
Okay.
But you know, I guess they changed the name of Monterey Road to North Road.
Really?
Yeah, so they don't have a Monterey Road, but we have a New Mollbro. It seems kind of fun. Fair.
North Road.
But we misspelled New Mollbro and are spelling it wrong, so.
Yeah, well. Thank you for figuring, for finding that. And I, I actually know how to spell it. That's like the way you spell cigarettes, but.
Well, I mean, our Mollbro doesn't have a UGH.
It doesn't?
No.
That must be why I didn't really catch it.
Yeah.
That's really funny.
I think, I, I think it's a common abbreviation too, so it's, it's not.
Uh.
Top of that page.
Also, I, right, no, but the present moderate will is not able to accept.
Is not.
Is not able, okay.
Is not able to accept.
For other towns. Right, but do the capital one.
Yep. And then I just moved about the letter to New Mollbro.
That's fine, yep.
And.
But it looks like we got it.
Or should approve the minutes of April twelfth, twenty-three as amended?
Second.
We'll call it vote yes.
Yes.
And so they are approved to get that in the mailbox. And there's only one change I need to revise. Susan.
Will, right?
Susan, Will.
Will, right? Something to recognize as general pending approval.
Yeah. Susan. Will. Right.
Since I had not yet done it, can't have with it.
Did you then touch on the Finance Committee?
Oh, yes, I did. We had a lovely conversation. He was totally fine with that. I wrote something and I sent it to Steve.
Great.
Who thanked me and said that was very nice.
Good. Okay, so with that, uh, motion to approve the minutes of, for twenty twenty-three.
Set.
Vote yes.
Yes.
So those are approved and that's the minutes and we're up to the.
And by the way, it sounds like that, um, that group that he and, uh, Ky- you know, Kyle and Mary got going has been a really useful thing to a lot of people. Um, and it's very well attended and it, it just sounds like it's mattered and, and really helped people, which I think is great. And I'm, you know, it's, it's cool that he's.
Yeah, it, it's a good, uh, it was something it's a, it's a, I think it's been good. Really good, um, for, for a little bit over a year.
And I, I know that they'll let raise, serve the well, because they do break out so that it's caregivers and, um, people who are suffering from the disease.
Yeah.
So that they can have their own conversations separately and that spaces for close, so it's great.
Good.
All right.
Any other business? Uh, there may not be a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a vote on adjournment.
Yes.
And yes, we adjourned at four, six forty-three PM.
Oh my God, under an hour, two in a row, Justin.